Welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, February 26, 2024. Is there a motion to open tonight's meeting? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor? Meeting is hereby open. Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't, I want to apologize because I'm going to take a motion to go into advice of counsel. So is there a motion to go into advice of counsel? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor? We're going to adjourn to advice of counsel. We'll be back as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Thank everyone for their patience. I appreciate it. Before going forward, we, I just want to bring to everyone's attention that the Village lost an important resident on November 19th. Elizabeth Diler Martin lost, died on November 19th at New York's Allen Hospital after a long illness. Elizabeth was a landscape designer, co-founder of Stephen Tilly, architect, or firm in Dobbs Ferry. Elizabeth was also a promotion director and co-developer of the Dobbs Ferry Playhouse, which is home to the architecture studio and affordable housing units. Her verve, her wit, her subtle sense of humor and artistic sensibility are cherished by her colleagues and friends. She was a memorable, beautiful person and the beloved life partner of Stephen Tilly. A celebration of her life in Elizabeth's honor will be held in late January. In lieu of flowers, donations, in Elizabeth's memory will be gratefully accepted by the Carey Institute of Ecosystem Studies in Millbrook, New York. We will post the details of what you can do on, on the Facebook page. And I'd just like to have a minute of silence for, in her memory. I thank you very much for that. Moving on, we have a couple of presentations. One of the presentations is involving the Dobbs Ferry Police Department. The chief has been away for so long, and I was wondering where he was and what he was doing, but he's come back with...
Are we in the meeting? Are we in the meeting?
The motion.
Excuse me?
Are we in the meeting?
I don't think we need a motion to go back from a vice of counsel. Do I need a motion to go back?
No.
Yeah, okay.
You just can mark the time that we return.
Yep. It wasn't an executive session, it was a vice of counsel?
Yes, it was a vice of counsel.
So, for those of you who don't know, Dobbs Ferry is now one of four police departments in the whole state of New York to be accredited by CALEA. Now, CALEA stands for the Commission on Accred- Accred- Accreditation. It's almost like my 150th...
Cesca Centennial.
Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. And that's the last time I'm gonna say that word. So, CALEA's mission is to improve public safety services by developing and maintaining a comprehensive set of standards that serve as benchmarks for law enforcement agencies worldwide. These standards are designed to enhance law enforcement practices, ensuring that agencies not only meet but exceed expectations for service and accountability. And I think it's important to know what CALEA takes into consideration when it evaluates a police department. And those are accountability, community engagement, policy development, training, and resource management. And only agencies that meet or exceed these requirements earn the prestigious CALEA seal of approval. Dobbs Ferry Police Department has received advanced accreditation in this situation. Dobbs Ferry Police Department, as I said, joins only four, is now the fourth municipality, and only the second one in Westchester County to, to get this distinguished. So, we have a letter from CALEA describing what they had to go, what our police department had to go through. It was very intense. And we're very proud that Dobbs Ferry Police Department has achieved this recognition. And I'd like the chief to come up and maybe you could explain a little bit. I know I was interviewed by the person, and I think Rob, you were interviewed as well, and maybe some of the other trustees were interviewed as well. So if you could just talk about what you went through and what to expect.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Trustees. Yes, this is quite the honor for the residents of Dobbs Ferry and is a victory for everybody. As you are aware, Dobbs Ferry has been New York State accredited continuously since 1994 under then-police chief George Longworth. We've maintained a, a set of standards. I believe now it's 111 standards in New York State's police agency. A modern professional police agency should follow, and we have maintained a continuous accreditation. However, several years ago, upon taking over, greatest honor of my life for this being the police chief, I felt that we should constantly be improving ourselves. And the next natural evolution of a police department was to seek voluntarily a, a higher form of accreditation. And this is where CALEA steps in. They have two tiers of law enforcement accreditation. One is approximately 180 standards. The second is, is the more difficult, the advanced, that consists of approximately 461 standards that we must meet every single year. It was a, it is a very difficult task, and because of, of the difficulties, very few police agencies seek this out. And it took three years of self-assessment for us to get our policies up to, up to speed, to pass muster, if you will. And in July, they began the off-site assessment to, to assessors, started remotely looking into our policies and making sure that our proofs of compliance were there. And then in August, we had a, a captain from the Burlington, North Carolina Police Department come on site and spend several days here, really ripping apart what we do as a police agency. I believe, I believe that the foundation of any good police department is their policy and procedure. That without good policy, we cannot do our job. And it is for this reason I really sought to make us uncomfortable and try to bring in something that no one else is doing. And it was November 16th at 1900 hours, the, the commission, which is composed of law enforcement and civilian professionals, the 201 commissioners voted to accept the recommendation by our committee for this advanced accreditation in Jacksonville, Florida, which is where I was with Lieutenant Travis Colvin. I can take no credit myself. This was put together by your police officers, the officers on the street. They're the ones that are doing the work. Every single day, making sure that we adhere not just to the state standard, but to this nationally recognized standard. They're the ones that deserve all the credit and the work. You know, I, I, I sit in an office now, my roles have changed, but I, can I tell you how proud I am of them? And so happy for the Village of Dobbs Ferry. This is a big deal. No one, you know, and I, again, Chief Andy Maturio from Scarsdale, extremely helpful in getting us here. His accreditation manager, Sergeant Danish, was here doing mock assessments at the beginning of the year, making sure that, again, our policies... You know, we're not, we're, we're not hiding anything, and that's important for accreditation. Outside agencies are gonna come in every year and look at our, our policy just to make sure we're maintained in the standard. And so every year, they will look at 25% of what we're doing, with the fourth year coming in onsite, on-site to actually finalize that. And so, as they put, we, we have made the promise to, to get CALEA, and then four years from now, we will keep that promise as we maintain the accreditation as well as the state standard. Dobbs Ferry will continue moving forward. And I do believe, you know, as a police agency, Dobbs Ferry leads the way. You know, Scarsdale has helped us. We are one of four municipal police agencies. There are two sheriff's offices in New York State, as well as to, I believe it's the Oneida Indian Nation Police Department, Syracuse University. And now recently, and this is the other thing that really, I think, take away, kind of cements my decision why we should do this. Over the summertime, the NYPD has now entered the CALEA self-assessment. They are now pursuing CALEA, as is the New York State Attorney General's Office, which really reaffirms that we beat them there. And, you know, and it just, it's something that you should be proud of. This is for you, for the residents. This is your police department. We are you, and we hold ourselves to an even higher standard than, than anybody else does. And so, this is something that I'm very proud of. I, I thank my officers, and I'm so proud I get to work for them, that they did this.
Thank you very much, chief. Really appreciate it. It's a great honor. Please extend our thanks to the rest of the force.
We'll have a certificate that will probably display. We're just waiting for that.
Okay, great. We have one other presentation. You wanna join me down at the...
Do you need a microphone?
Yes.
After eight years, I can do something for you.
So this is a very bittersweet day. We're gonna miss Larry. He's been a very reliable trustee. I've listened, taken his advice many times, not taken his advice more times. But he's someone that I listen to and take his advice with, with a heavy hand, because I know that he's always thinking about things, even if he's not physically in Dobbs Ferry. So, it's time, like everybody else, it's time to move on. So in recognition of, of his service, we do have a pro, we do have a proclamation, and I just wanna read part of it. "Whereas Lawrence Taylor answered a call to serve the community as a village trustee on May 10th, 2016. And whereas Lawrence has, Lawrence served his tenure as a village trustee with dedication and commitment to give back..."
And he's watching TV.
"...to give back to his community and serve all the residents of Dobbs Ferry in the most fair-minded manner. And whereas he served the community, giving his time as a member and liaison to various village boards and committees, including the AHRB, the Budget Committee, the Energy Task Force, Sustainability Task Force, Sustainable Dobbs, Historic Hudson River Towns, the Library Board, River Arts, River Towns Arts Council, and the Senior Advocacy Committee. Whereas he's made countless positive contributions to the deliberations of the board, and in a most skillful and cooperative manner, helped to resolve conflicts and reach consensus, and the Village of Dobbs Ferry is a better place because of his service. And therefore, be of being resolved that through the authority of my office, I do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 27th, 2024, is Lawrence Taylor Day in the Village of Dobbs Ferry, and direct that the proclamation be carried throughout the village for people of goodwill to see and know." Let me have, we have a plaque for Larry in recognition of your dedicated service to the citizens of the Village of Dobbs Ferry as village trustee from 2016 to 2024, from your friends and colleagues at the Village of Dobbs Ferry. It's all yours, Larry. Microphone's all yours.
Well, I just wanna take just a minute to say a few thank yous to the mayor and the board. It's been a privilege to work with all of you, and it's been a pleasure usually. To the village staff, I don't think there's another village in Westchester or in New York State that has the same kind of dedicated and hard-working group that really care about the village, and that matters a lot. To the police, fire, the EMS who protect us, serve the village, some without pay, you know, thank you. And lastly, just to thank all of the resident volunteers that I've met. It's been an extraordinary experience to work with these different committees and see how much talent, how much energy, what great ideas people have, and, you know, how they can help the village, all again, unpaid, but just wanting to do the right thing for their fellow residents. And lastly, I'm thrilled that Christie has won election to the seat that I'm vacating. She's experienced, she's intelligent and energetic. She is gonna be a wonderful trustee. So hopefully, I'll go back to just being a volunteer and get a few Tuesday nights free. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to be the mayor for the day and do the rest of this?
Uh, no, thank you. I couldn't possibly do the good job that you will be doing.
The next item on the agenda is appointments. Is there a motion to appoint Christopher Storer as the first alternate member of the planning board for the term of one year? Is that commend- as the first alternate member of the planning board for the term of one year, as recommended by the nominating committee? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor. That passes unanimously. Next is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing, which was a local, consider a local law, mending Chapter 290 vehicles and traffic to clarify the on-street parking regulations for Livingston Avenue? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor. This public hearing is hereby open. I think Rob and Lauralee, you could clarify the situation.
Sure. We reviewed the current code based upon the, and I did send an email out with the details of this, based upon the comments received at the time you opened the public hearing about the impacts of the long-term parking, the abuse by the commuters, and the need for street cleaning and snow clearing. When I looked at the current code, the regulations clearly say there's no parking on either side of the street, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 to noon. That would, if enforced with signage and appropriate oversight by the code enforcement and parking individuals, would cover all of the impacts that had been identified by the residents. I don't believe that the streets on the sign match the current code provisions. Current code provisions are, were clearly put into place to inhibit the abuse by commuters and also to allow for appropriate cleaning by the DPW. So maybe there was some miscommunication in terms of what was posted in the field, but the code currently allows for no parking, prohibits parking Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 12:00, both sides of the street.
So in your opinion, we don't need to pass any, any...
In my opinion, if, yes. In my opinion, the local law overrides this and turns it into a alternate side cleaning street, and, which is not necessary and would not, of course, inhibit that commuter parking, which apparently was a concern by the residents in the area.
So we just have to match the code with the signs?
Correct. You can, if you're amenable and you would like to, you can take a motion to simply withdraw the local law from further consideration. It is just an introductory local law at this point. You're in the midst of a public hearing and for purposes of receiving public comment, and the public comment you did receive resulted in this investigation a little deeper into what's going on.
Okay. Any of the comments from the board?
So just to recap, because I'm sorry, I'm not seeing the email that you referenced, so I might be missing some details, but we started this conversation, just on, I know what we're talking about here. We started this conversation because the DPW wanted to add alternate side parking one day a week to the side that didn't appear to have necessarily any parking restrictions in order to make it possible to clean on the east side of Livingston.
Yes.
They were already doing that once a week on the west side of Livingston during the no parking for these three hours, Monday through Friday, but then we were wondering why there was no parking the other four days. And it had the somewhat, one could argue, happy benefit of preventing it being used as parking by commuters from other municipalities, but that, but that was an accident. That wasn't sort of by design. And so now we've determined that in fact, there was no parking Monday through Friday.
On either side?
On either side, 9:00 to 12:00. So in theory, if that sign was there, then the DPW could do the cleaning that it wanted to do. However, the fact that we have no parking there Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 12:00, doesn't solve, it has a sort of byproduct of solving for this incoming commuter hypothetical of outsiders using that parking for, to access the train, but may not. But we also had raised the question of whether there was some sort of permit for Dobbs Ferry or some other permitted access that we could protect so that we wouldn't have to make it inconvenient for everyone along Livingston to not be able to park there from 9:00 to 12:00, five days a week, if really the goal is just to be able to prevent outsiders from using it for commuting and to create one day a week use for street sweeping. Is that a correct summary of where things were?
I wasn't aware that you were trying to add a permit to your permit system.
Now, there was a perception that there was...
There was a permit that you removed with the most recent...
Right. So we removed the permit, but I think the point is that, at least what we discussed last time, if I remember correctly, we have this three-hour, five-day-week prohibition, which it turns out is on both sides of Livingston, which has the intended effect of preventing outsiders from using it as a commuting parking lot, basically. However, what it also does is make it inconvenient for anyone in Dobbs Ferry who lives in Dobbs Ferry or who lives on Livingston from parking...
Between 9:00 and 12:00, five days a week?
9:00 and 12:00, which seems like unnecessarily onerous limitation on parking in our village that doesn't exist elsewhere in our village. Like, it seems like a backdoor way to prevent...
I can't speak to why it was put on the books that way. I can just tell you it is on the books that way, but it hasn't been enforced on the signs.
Are you asking that we should look into putting...
So I guess I'm happy to say, like, whatever's on the books should be enforced, but I think what this has raised is that, to me, that doesn't seem like a good policy to have on this street, and we should look at how to accomplish our goals, which are street sweeping once a week on both sides of the street, and if we...
We don't have this anywhere else.
No, I really do think, I feel really strongly that it prevents people from New Jersey and Rockland and other communities like Ardsley and West, places that don't have train stations or have long waiting lists for their train station, even post-COVID, for parking, to not use Livingston as a, as a commuter lot when there is a huge lot and meters that can be done. So I think there is a purpose. I'm sure that was the purpose in putting that there. We have the same issue on Palisades Street. So I think we should leave it as is, and if the residents on Livingston find it's, you know, an issue for them with their own parking, they should come and talk to us, and then we can see if there's a different solution.
I think it was that pointed out that most of the residents on Livingston have off-street parking associated with their properties. And the, the other issue was, I believe that an email came in from the individual who had testified at your public hearing with some further requests or suggestions, but the fact is, what is proposed in local law doesn't address what you're suggesting in terms of a permitted parking.
Yeah, I'm not saying permit is the answer. I'm just saying it seems like a very, I, I'm not saying this isn't a problem that we should address. I'm just saying that this particular solution seems very heavy-handed and broad, overbroad.
Why not, I mean, in the rest of the village, the commuters are eliminated, or most of the rest of the downtown or the village, or community, by, by time-limited parking. So two hours parking, Monday to Friday, 9:00 to, you know, whenever, I don't know why we wouldn't do that there. And then if you had somebody who was working at your house or visitors or whatever, that they could park it for two hours, and that would stop commuters from using it.
Can I suggest that we just do this now, and I think you're not disagreeing with this, just do this now?
I think we should, yeah, we should enforce the current law.
Yes. Well, I agree with that.
It should be sweepable.
Okay, so let's do that. And let's hear the from the public. Does the public have anything to say? Come on up.
This, and again, these are, these are, these are comments on the local law, not comments on the current, this, you know, you're limited now in your public hearing. We're going back to what the, the local law was, which was to remove this, put it on alternate side.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, thank you for, again, let's...
Tell us who you are and where you live.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. A.J. Dobbs, 38 Livingston Avenue. Just to address what Jessica said, if I may, just quickly. Livingston Avenue might be the only street in the area or in the village that has this problem, this request for the no parking, but it's a unique street with a very unique location with severe issues on each end of the street. One is at the five-way at the end of the street, and one is at Broadway with the sharp curve in the street. There are some other interesting issues with the street, is that especially on the weekends, but pretty much every night, every day, but mostly at night with the restaurants and so forth, we have a lot of traffic going up and down the streets. And as it gets a little bit later, and people seem to be a little more relaxed, whatever that might mean, they run the stop signs, they speed up and down the road, they race back and forth.
Sorry, I can just let you know that, you know, we received your email with these suggestions about these three issues, and we forwarded them to the chief, and so they're under consideration.
Oh, okay. Oh, so, so I did, I did bring copies of, of like...
You can share it if you want, but it's been forwarded to the chief, yeah.
Okay. And thank you, Chief. Thank you for reviewing that. I did, and sorry for the misspelled words. I realized after I sent it, I couldn't find my glasses, so I'm a little embarrassed.
If you didn't notice, if it makes you feel better.
Oh, I do apologize. I read it with my glasses, and I was like, oh, my gosh. Well, the first one was the, the double yellow lines, and I, I discussed this actually with...
This really doesn't concern the...
You have to address the local law?
Oh, oh, this doesn't address, oh, I'm sorry. This is just to improve, just make the street safer.
Right.
Right. All we're talking about is the parking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have nothing else to say, other than thank you all.
Okay. We will address what you, as Nicole said, we will address that.
Oh, great. And Nicole, thank you for our conversation.
Yeah, anytime.
Very beneficial, and thank you for listening to that as well. I hope the points were clear.
They were.
And just trying to make good suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you.
They were. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so in light of that, is there a motion to withdraw the local law that we had this public hearing about? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor. That passes unanimously, so that proposal is withdrawn. We're going to put up signs that match the reality.
And in the meantime, we can talk about further adjustments to parking, to address what trustee Galen was mentioning, and also, we appreciate that Mr. Dobbs brought in these other suggestions to make, it's always good to get on-the-ground information about impacts.
Yes. Speaking of which, I do want to point out, maybe we can ask the building inspector to, to talk to the applicant, who last week, we told that we would not provide off-street parking for a renovation there because there was plenty of parking in the street, and they should be apprised of this, and if they want to reapply, I think we should, we should let them do that, given that the situation is different than we thought it was when we told them that.
Fair enough. Good. Courtesy of the floor. Everybody here who wants to speak to courtesy of the floor. Anybody online? Okay, let's move on to the resolutions. The first resolution is to consider a motion to schedule a public hearing to establish the Office of Auditor for the Review and Authorization for Payment of Claims. Just as a way of background, the Village Board of Trustees, as fiduciaries, are responsible for reviewing every bill that's paid by this village, and quite frankly, can become an onerous job. So one of the thoughts is to consider having a person hired to do this, an auditor who would review that, whose specialty is to investigate and review these bills. So we're talking about it. In order to create this position, we must have a public hearing so that the public can weigh in on it. So is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for December 17th, 2024, at 7:30 to address the issue of creating a local law to establish the Office of Auditor? Trustee... What, Lauralee?
I'm sorry, the local, I'm sorry, I think the local law unfortunately was attached to the workshop and not attached to the regular meeting, so we'll make sure that we get the local law out and made it available.
Okay. Trustee Taylor, second trustee Patino, all in favor. That passes unanimously. Action item number two is there a motion to close the Office of Village Hall and the Village Department of Public Works and the Village Court for Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, for Record Management Day. Trustee Taylor, second trustee Rosenberg, all in favor. That passes unanimously. Action item number three, this will be a resolution that we would send to the governor to maintain her support for aid for municipalities. Just by way of background, in 2023 and in 2024, Dobbs Ferry received a whopping total of $77,000, I believe, Jeff, in aid money, which stands for aid and incentives for municipalities. We are calling for the governor to recognize the need for a long-term plan and to commit to continuing to spend the additional $50,000, $50 million statewide in our budget. So is there a motion to create a resolution and send to the governor in support of continued and increased state aid for local governments? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor. That passes unanimously. Action item number four, is there a motion to permit the displays of... Talking so fast. Is there a motion to permit the display of a menorah at the intersection of Cedar Street and Main Street? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor. That passes unanimously. That will be up from December 10th, 2024, to January 10th, 2025. We always look forward to that. I understand that there's not going to be a celebration of ice and fire like he's done the last two years. Last year was actually...
Hanukkah starts on Christmas.
I don't, this, I don't know why.
You know, Hanukkah starts on Christmas, so maybe, I don't know.
I know. The last two years, I know Shari and I went, so, and I think you guys were there also. It was indoors, right? Action item number five, is there a motion, oh, okay, let's talk about this one. So action item number five is a resolution that would increase the compensation of the village trustees and mayor. It's been over 20 years since the Board of Trustees have gone and increased. It's not certainly to make the mayor and the trustees rich at all, it's just that, over, 1997?
1987.
1987?
1987 was the last rate.
1987 was the last.
Well, that's all you have to say. It's well-deserved at that point, then.
So we just want to bring it in line with some of the other villages and be an accurate representation of the services that we perform, and also make it so that other people who want to become trustee don't have to lose money by paying babysitters to come here. So is there a motion to increase the compensation of the mayor and village trustees? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor. That passes unanimously.
Larry, do you want to change your mind?
It's still, it's still, it's still a good thing that the trustee job is not subject to minimum wage laws, or the village would be in a lot of trouble.
Like interns.
I almost called you trustee Mel yet, but trustee elect. Now, you see, you already got a raise, and you didn't, you didn't even know you were going to get it. Action item number six, is there, is there a motion to waive certain fees for proposed interior improvements to village-owned property at 11 Station Plaza? We had a presentation made at the last meeting about what was to be done there. I think Dan Roma has submitted an email saying, or maybe it was John Stone, saying that the...
Body voice that...
The permits would be, I think, about $2,000, and it's been done in the past. So I think the board is in favor of waiving those fees. So is there a motion to waive fees for proposed interior improvements to village-owned property at 11 Station Plaza? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Galen, all in favor. That passes unanimously. Action item number seven, is there a motion to declare the, are we declaring ourselves as the lead agency, or we already did that?
You, you awarded a contract to start a public works project. I just noted that we hadn't really addressed SECR, and in this case, it's a type-two action because it's a, it's a like-kind, so we just want to make sure that the record's complete, that you did the SECR as far as you needed to.
Right. Do I first have to declare us as the lead agency?
No, you don't. It's just classification.
Okay. So is there a motion to determine that the project qualifies as a type-two action under SECR and requires no further environment to review? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Rosenberg, all in favor. That passes unanimously.
And mayor, if I can point out, this project, we're having a kickoff meeting next week. We received all the bonds and insurance, so we're going to hit the ground as soon as we get the materials in place.
And I have prepared the necessary access and license agreement, because, as you know, the easement there is sort of in the middle of property, so the property owner will need to just draft a license agreement, and that reassures him that any damage will be restored, and that the scope of the project includes any damage caused by the removal of that infrastructure at the time of the Ida storm.
Okay. So action, that's good. Action item number eight, is there a motion to approve the audit of claims submitted and recommended by the village treasurer? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor. That passes unanimously. I'm going to add a motion. So is there a motion to add a resolution waiving the parking fees at the 99 Cedar Street parking lot from December 1st through December 31st, 20... No, I think it shouldn't be 31st. It should be through December, okay, December 31st, 2024. Okay. So is that, is there a motion to... So is that, is there a motion to add that motion? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor. Is there a motion to waive the parking fees in the 99 Cedar Street parking lot from December 1st through December 31st, 2024?
Not the durational limits, just the fee. The fee.
Just the fee. Trustee Taylor, second trustee Galen, all in favor. That passes unanimously. I have another motion that I've been handed that I have to add. Really? We have to vote on this?
Kendra wanted to make sure she can get a check tomorrow, $750 for the, for the Christmas tree at Cedar and Main.
So I have to add a motion?
To the, the requisition list, just want to make sure it's payable.
So am I adding this as a motion?
I can't pay that until you guys approve it.
Approved.
I need a motion to do this? Okay, let's, let's just do it. So I need a motion to add a resolution for the payment of a 17-foot tree for the corner of Cedar and Main Street totaling $750. Trustee Taylor, second trustee Rosenberg, all in favor. That's now added to the agenda. Now, is there a motion to approve the payment of $750 for a 17-foot Christmas, I shouldn't say tree, 17-foot tree on the corner of Cedar and Main Street? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor. That's now up to you.
Would that be for the test question?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to skip the, except for trustee Taylor. Trustee Taylor, do you have any liaison report or announcement you want to make?
The only liaison report I have is from Sustainable Dobbs, who would like to discuss at a workshop the possibility of hiring a sustainability coordinator to help build on the village's record of lots of grants that have been helpful for village financing and for the environment.
I'm just going to go for two seconds because the Human Rights and Diversity Committee, the mayor, the village administrator, and I, and I'm members of the Human Rights and Diversity Committee, participated in the first listening circle, and it was fantastic. And this is something that they're going to be rolling out to the public, to employees of the village. It was a really wonderful opportunity to try to listen to people's stories and get other people's, to get to know each other better, to try to get to an effective place where we can really stand up to our motto of Dobbs Ferry being a welcoming and affirming village and what that means to everybody. And I encourage everybody, do not miss the opportunity to participate in one of these.
Yeah, I just want to highlight that, that, that listening circle gave us an opportunity to, Shari said, to listen to others, and I think we also learned to be more, have more empathy for other people's point of views and to be open to people from different backgrounds and with, trying to, not prejudge people before they come in or speak or have any other suggestions. So I think it opened our minds up to.
And I think those who are most skeptical should be the first people to sign up for it because it really was very eye-opening and very positive.
Yeah, we'd like to open that up to the whole village eventually, so it should be a great opportunity. So thank you for that. And there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Trustee Taylor, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor. Passes unanimously, and?